There.
Yeah.
Call the meeting of the Finance Committee to order, March 24th, 6 o'clock. Everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance.
The United States of America. Nation of the.
Right. So the first item on the agenda, we'll go right to the school.
Yeah. Coach, thank you very much. First and foremost, thank you for having us this evening. Anthony Inzah, Superintendent of Schools of Dyane Rahobeth. This evening, we have Rob Baxter with us. He's our Business Administrator. The Chair of our School Committees with us, Mr. Aaron Moss. And we have a school committee person, Eliza Pucha, also here this evening. What I'm going to do is just give you a very brief introduction. I think in the past, I've always got a little off-center because I usually talk about a lot of the things that we've done in the school, we continue to do. And I know as a Finance Committee, that your main role, of course, is to look at the assessments, see the impact on the town. But if you'd be so kind to give me just a few minutes to share some of the things that we're very proud of in the district. Our budget process typically begins around October of the beginning of the school year. As many of you know, we've gone through a tumultuous two years with COVID impacting our schools, just like districts throughout the country, throughout the municipality, as well in Dyane and Rahobeth. Our kids are very resilient, our staff is very resilient, our parents are very resilient. There's been a lot of things going on. I'm very happy to report to you that at this state of where we are within our school district, there's been a great deal of learning going on, teaching going on. And we're always cognizant of the social emotional well-being of our kids and of our staff as well. And we follow the MIA insurance, folks. We were afforded throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, an award for creating self-understanding of the social emotional well-being of our staff members, giving them an opportunity to, you know, take a step back, exhale, remember to breathe in, exhale, all, you know, all in the same motion. So we're very proud of that. What you see before you, the budget starts, the budget preparation for us begins sometime in October. That's where we will call a meeting together with our principals, our administrative team throughout the district. And it is at this meeting, we ask our staff members, the principals, to work with their staff within the school district as to what they believe, similar to the process that you folks use as well in the municipality, what does FY23 look like? What is it that we need to continue our opportunities for our kids, create programs, continue the staffing? And what we believe that started in October, all that hard work really paid off Tuesday night. We've also had meetings with Mr. Mullin regularly, first Monday of the month, really a informal type of thing where we'll talk about, you know, the needs of the town of Dyane, the needs within the school district, and how we can coexist together. Our two overarching goals within the district is student achievement, obviously. Our role is to create those opportunities for kids to achieve and to better their lives as they go on and graduate from DR. But our second overarching goal, which is just as important, is the sustainability of our two towns, Dyane and Rahobeth, to make sure whatever program we're creating, and we all understand that we want to create the best programs for our kids, but we also know that it comes with a cost. We also know that the towns, they need opportunities to grow as well. So we believe that the budget that we're presenting this evening, that we presented Tuesday, is our best opportunity for our kids. There are no layoffs, there are no additional, you know, big-ticket item surprises that we might have had in the past. Our Special Needs Director, Kristin Donahue, has done a really nice job of maintaining costs, but also delivering the education that our special needs students need. Our Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Blaisdell, has done a phenomenal job using Esser funds to offset some of those costs that we'll probably talk a little bit about if we get to it, especially with our excess and deficiency, the E&amp;D, which has not been certified yet. We anticipate that because of the abbreviated school year that we had, FY21, that we will see quite a large turnback to our two towns. We don't know what that number is yet, but we believe that because of the abbreviation of the school calendar year, and because it was a hybrid and then, you know, in-person, that there were some cost savings, obviously, that will exceed the 5% of the E&amp;D that we typically will have. And we believe that our E&amp;D from the school district will be a robust at least 5%, which is approximately 2.2 million in that range. So with that as a backdrop, we've had meetings with our subcommittee of our school committee as well, we've had meetings with our school committee. So hopefully, what you'll see tonight, and Rob will take us through those pieces in a moment, that you'll see that we believe that this is one of our better budgets at this stage of the game. Be reminded, though, this is not a finale. There is still discussion, there is still opportunities to look at the budget for efficiencies or anything along those lines. So with that in mind, through the chair, if I may introduce Rob Baxter to take us through the budget itself and the assessments.
Evening, thank you, thank you very much. All right, so I will try to be quick and concise, and I, again, as Doc mentioned, I do need to acknowledge the entire DR team who helped pull this together and, you know, who really have contributed to translating, you know, the students' needs into a budget, which is not as easy as you think. So before we get into the budget, I just would like to, let's see if this works. What I do, there it is. Before we get into the budget, I just would like to point out that the district has published its budget in several forms, that in an attempt to be as clear and transparent as possible. And all of the reports are available immediately on our homepage, as well as with the budget documents under the business office. But they're right on the homepage, so if anybody's interested, everything's there. So this is just a summary slide, and the bottom line here is what we're proposing in this fiscal '23 budget of about $47.4 million. Currently, our budget right now is just under $46 million, and so the difference is an increase of about $1.4 million. And I'll take you through what makes that up. There are several factors driving this increase, but equally important, and I mentioned this at last week's meeting, there are several achievements that have helped reduce the increase, that help moderate our expenses, and I think that they need to be understood and recognized as well. So on the one side, yes, we do have contractual salary increases. We have Title I, which I'm, and referrals for special education services, which I'm going to talk about in a little bit more detail further. We've obviously are preparing for inflation next year, especially with fuel increases. You know, the high school is heated with fuel oil, and that's self-explanatory. And we've had some other, we need to prepare for other extraordinary expenses. But on the other hand, we've had, we've got several favorable factors, again, helping to moderate our budget. Part of this is, you know, we've been, we've taken the building improvements and submitted them via Warren Articles. We have one for the Enrollment Expansion Project, whatever you want to call it, that's been, we'll go forward, hopefully, in Dyane. We've had, as Doc mentioned, and we'll talk about it a little bit further, the availability of federal funding, that's been very helpful. The health insurance, one of the favorable outcomes, and this is also a credit to the staff, the DR staff, has been healthier for whatever reason, whatever this, we've been healthier, and so our health claims have been minimal, and we've been able to maintain our health insurance at no increase this year. So I think that that's a significant accomplishment. And finally, my predecessor had entered into some very good power purchase agreements, which will allow us to maintain pretty much the cost of electricity from 2019 through 2024. So it's, that's a, that's a nice thing. So, so again, we should recognize that, right? So this is all good work that has helped to, when we see the bottom line and we've seen that it's about a 3% increase, that's why, when we look at the world around us, that we're able to keep it where we're at. So before we, before we drill down into the detail, it's important that we look and understand some of the key or global or district-wide factors that affect all locations, and let's make sure we understand them. The first is curriculum programming. Again, I'll talk about these instructional supplies, we've seen some changes there, subscription renewals, what's going, and things that are going on in the special education world. When we talk about curriculum, we're not just talking about what we teach our students, but the books, the software, the subscriptions for content, the media, the manipulatives that all go along, you know, all these tools that go along with the instruction. And so when we look at that, Dr. Blaisdell has been reviewing our current programs and the needs, we've been going through them, and we're teed up to purchase and refresh our curriculum in several areas, algebra, US history, literature, you'll see on the left. And then we, as you see on the right, we are preparing to use not just local funds, but Esser funds where we can, where it's applicable. And we're also looking, which is, I think, a really interesting project, we're also looking at adding possible electives to the high school. And again, those would be through grant funds, but in some cases, we need to either match, as with the program that we'll see at towards the end of the presentation, or, again, partially fund through local funding. And again, and then finally, you know, we're exploring the areas that are in need of just documentation of curriculum and more, you know, more structure there. So throughout the, the key thing is, later on, when I talk about the budget stuff, the numbers, what, you know, I'll use the word textbooks, but really what I mean is like all this stuff that gets wrapped around, you know, I'm just a, I'm just a simple guy when it comes to the instruction side, so I'm just lumping all of the workbooks and the subscriptions and the software that goes around with it. Next is instructional supplies. Normally, you wouldn't see this, it wouldn't stand out, but because of the pandemic, because of our abridged instructional use both, you know, 2020 and 2021, we've had a kind of this carryforward of instructional supplies that we were able to use, and they were basically resulted in a savings for us initially, so they were relatively, I don't say minimally, but we didn't have the same funding requirement in the 2022 year. However, next year, we need to restock, and we're also anticipating some price inflation, so you'll see a bump there. There's also most, there's a couple of new programs, but most significantly in the career side, that will need some supply, so that just stands out. Subscription renewals, again, you know, we live now in a new world, model is shifting. So instead of just purchasing textbooks or whatever, we subscribe to content, just the way we subscribe to digital content we do in an instructional setting as well. And so some of these subscriptions are scheduled to be renewed, and this is going to, by the way, going to be an ongoing, an ongoing shift, if you will. So textbooks by themselves will come down, but our subscription renewals will go up. And, you know, so a couple of the notable subscription renewals are envisions for $43,000 and big ideas, so. And Title I, I'm not going to drill down, this mainly affects the Palmer River Elementary in Rahobeth, but it, so I'm not going to speak too much about that. But essentially, what's going on there is Palmer River may no longer qualify as a Title I school, and so those, that will affect the local funding budget. However, Esser, which, you know, just for your, you know, when you wake up in the morning, you wonder what does Esser stand for, it's Elementary and Secondary Schools Emergency Relief. So what's going on there is, we just outlined that it's a significant factor on our budget because we've been able to, I think, make lasting changes, right? So they're federal funds that were allocated to, you know, secondary, elementary and secondary schools to offset the cost of the pandemic response. But they have pretty broad application, and DR has been able to use some of these funds, not just to offset pandemic response expenses, but in a way to make lasting changes to the districts. And in one case, in one, I think, significant example is back in, you know, last school year, when Chromebooks and other technology needed to be purchased, we were able to use these funds. So we're continuing to use them, and again, the key is to make lasting improvements to the district schools. So again, speaking of the pandemic response, I think one of the possible outcomes that we've experienced, it's not a, one of the outcomes that could possibly be attributed to the pandemic, is that we are experiencing a dramatic increase in referrals and needs for special education services for our students. So consequently, this year, there are two additions to the budget over the current year, and this, this does affect the Dyane campus. The first is Special Ed Coordinators, right? So there's this whole procedure, this whole process, and it's not a very good word, and I'm sure Ms. Donahue would hit me over the head again, the, no, with.
We practice not violence.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, that's true. So it is, but there's this whole, what I'll call onboarding process, when a student is referred and needs, and is in need of services. And right now, the psychologists handle that onboarding process, but it's not in their, it's not in their wheelhouse, and it takes them away from their core, their core function, which is to deliver psychological services and support to students. And we've reached the critical mass, if you will, where we need to remove this responsibility, this on, what I'll call this coordination, this onboarding responsibility, to its own role, right? We've been doing it kind of as a part-time thing, and we're at a point where we can no longer do that. And so what this budget includes is a Special Ed Coordinator for the campus to allow for this. It's, there's meetings with parents, there's drawing up of legal documents, there's a whole slew of huge workload that goes along with this. So we've added this, we've added this to the budget. And the next is this partial program for Dyane Middle School. And right now, when students require these concentrated interventions, what happens is we've either send students out of district, or we send them to a similar, we transport them to Beckwith Middle School. And again, we're reaching critical mass where this can be more economically, allows us to more economically provide the services by setting up this program in or at Dyane Middle School. So in other words, the thing is, is, yeah, it looks like an increase, but if we don't, it's really, we would have an increase someplace else in transportation and in tuitions, what other things. So we're thinking this is the most economical way to provide the services that the students need. So now, let's review each school's location. What I've done here, and again, you have the handouts, is I've summarized each location's budget by function, comparing last year to this year. And then where the bulk of the budget, the bulk of the activity is in Function 2000, which is instructional services, on the next slide, for each location, we'll just drill down a little bit and talk about what's, what's kind of happening in each, in each school. So starting off, Dyane Elementary is roughly flat, less than a percent change in the budget. And if we flip to the next slide, we see that that's because we're anticipating favorable step changes or breakage in salaries, and also that's partially offset, again, by the textbooks and supplies and the curriculum, which we've already discussed. We move to Dyane Middle School, Dyane Middle School is up, projected to be up about 16% over last year. And again, and again, if we drill down into why, we see this due to a number of factors. The first is, you'll see towards the end of the presentation, that we've had a few positions that were, they were district-wide positions, right? They kind of floated, and we are allocating them to specific locations. And so you'll see a decrease in the district-wide and an increase in the, in the location-specific budgets. So part of this increase is really offset by a decrease somewhere else. And then in addition, you'll see that, again, at the end of the presentation, very quickly, that some of those positions are going to be moved to grants like IDEA, right? So they're coming out of the local budget. And then, but, but there are some additions, especially at DMS, we just talked about the partial program and the Special Ed Coordinator. And then, and then a little bit further down in Object 500, where we see supplies, it has to do with the curriculum programming, and the supplies, everything that we talked about just a little bit earlier. Palmer River, again, very similar to Dyane Elementary, it's relatively flat, and pretty much for the same reasons, although we see that we're expecting an increase in regular ed transportation. And then Beckwith, somewhat, Beckwith Middle School somewhat mirrors Dyane Middle School, and at an increase of about 7% over the current year. And again, this is primarily due to the allocation of district-wide staff to the building, and also contractual salary increases in the Special Ed Coordinator. Finally, I think, not finally, but moving to the high school, which is more, a little bit more, there's a little bit more to this story. You see about, and we're proposing about an 11% increase, and a little more than 10% of that increase is in Function 1000, which is the operation in the building, and it has to do with, maybe most of that has to do with increases in fuel oil that we're projecting, plus just maintaining an old, old building. However, if we drill down into, again, the instructional component, we see a good chunk is, again, due to contractual salary increases, positions that, again, that we're moving to the location from the district-wide. And then again, you'll see an increase in instructional supplies. The high school was probably the most dramatically affected when we talk about that, not just the savings from the last couple of years, and then the increase that we think we're going to require next year. Again, the curriculum and the textbook adoptions and replacements and the subscription renewals also kind of play into this. Next is career, and this is what I get excited about. I grew up in, my dad had a company that made school buses, and so I grew up in a sheet metal shop, and I'm very excited because this budget is, again, proposed to increase about 14%, which seems like a lot, but remember, the CTE budget is relatively small. And it's really due to a couple of factors, I think it's on the next slide here, and namely, the formation of new program, and like, so one of them, what I'm very excited about is the Advanced Manufacturing, which, again, just, I come from the sheet metal world, and got all new machines out there, and if you get a chance, I would strongly recommend you come and take a look. So the, so the, it has to do with the supplies and setting up that program next year, and also the construction and carpentry. And it also, also the increase has to do with transportation for the students, you know, we take, especially now that the pandemic's behind us, we want to get back into transporting students to job sites and, you know, especially, you know, the ones that are in the construction program. And we need to replace the van so that we can not only take the kids, but transport and tow the trailer with the tools. So thank you for sticking with me. The office, the central office, is roughly flat to last year, and it remains relatively unchanged. And again, it sounds boring, but in this no change is really exciting because this is where things like health insurance is parked, and I know other districts that are seeing 5%, 6% increase in health insurance, and for us to be relatively flat here, I think is a significant accomplishment. And district-wide, we see as a reduction in over $200,000, and that's, again, primarily due to the reclassification, moving, you know, to the locations and also to, to federal grants. All right, now, this one we'll spend a little bit more time on, but this is the assessment summary. And so the first, the first thing, we start at the top and kind of work our way down, the total recommended budget is about $48.2 million. You say, whoa, you told me at the beginning it was 47 and change. Well, the difference is the $810,000 in circuit breaker state funding for, pays for out-of-district tuitions, and we back that back out again, and it's in the state aid and other revenue line. So both lines are elevated to include that, but I need to kind of build it in there to help capture the budgets for the, between the two towns to calculate the distributions. So if we follow, if we follow down the math, bottom line is the capital assessment, so, yeah, so we go through, we've got the operating budgets, and then we get to the capital assessment. The capital assessment is $1.177 million. Everything but $70,000 of that is the debt that we owe on the projects that we've had, the roofs, the windows, the boilers, solar panels, and all that stuff. And $70,000 is for a new curtain for the stage, the high school stage, and it's in a 40, roughly $47 million budget, it's relatively immaterial, and it's something that's, you know, that we need to, we need to do. There's certain fire codes and things, I'm a little bit, talking a little bit out of turn outside of my wheelhouse, but there's certain fire codes that the curtains need to comply with, and, and just, and it's an old curtain. So anyways, so we get down, so that's what's in the capital line, and so the total assessment to the towns is increased, the Dyane, we really would focus on the Dyane one, is up, proposed about 3.1%, which is $338,850. $338,850. So that's how we got from start to finish, and with that, I'll turn the mic back to Dr. Inzar for our closing remarks.
Thank you, Rob. I just wanted, I think we would be remiss if we didn't take this opportunity to thank the town of Dyane for all of the support that you have afforded us over my eight years, Superintendent, standing with us as a partner in our education of our students. Can't tell you how much we appreciate that. We have always been cognizant of the things that Dyane needs to do for your constituency as well, and your constituency obviously includes kids and parents and education. So it's, you know, it's a tough, you know, it's a juggling act of sorts, not to minimize what we do to a juggling act, but nevertheless, it's very important for us to understand how important it is for the folks here in Dyane to have an understanding of, you know, what we need to do day in and day out. So with that in mind, Rob, myself, will answer any questions. Chairperson Moss is here as well, Eliza's here as well, to share any insight that they might have on any of your questions, so, right away.
There are a couple of questions for you, if you guys don't mind.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
The first question, you'd mentioned that FY21 is not certified yet, is that a normal process for the school that by March it's not?
No, not really, but. So it's a good question. So the, for a variety of reasons, and I'm trying to digest this, bottom line, for a variety of reasons, the district this year is required to complete, or substantially complete our audit before the state will certify. Normally, the state will certify and then you do the audit. So we are in process, we, we're significantly through the audit process, in fact, we've got the auditors coming out the week of April 4th, and we're hoping somewhere around there that the auditors will be to a point where they will feel comfortable to get on a conference call with the Department of Revenue and say, yep, you guys are good, and go ahead and certify the access number. So that's what we're waiting for.
When the audit's done, is, might get a copy of it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So what will happen, I just, you'll learn that if you ask me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you. So what will happen is, is that you, when we receive the audit, right, so everything kind of runs through the school committee, we will present the audit to the school committee, and once they've accepted it, it becomes a public document, and then we'll send it to the towns and kind of go, and then we'll post it on the public, the website and all that, yeah, so it will, and that will be the process that we'll go through.
Okay, great.
There were two special education coordinators mentioned for the middle schools. Are they strictly for the middle schools? What are we doing?
No, we are, pardon me, we are allocating them fiscally to the middle schools, but it's, will be to support that campus. So there'll be one for the Dain campus to support both schools, one for the Rehoboth campus to support both schools, and one for the high school. You're welcome.
All right, then, I didn't want to jump in and take all the time, so I do have more questions. I guess my first question, so you had mentioned costs being, that may have been shared in the past, removed from location to location. Do we know how much, you know, looking at just the breakout in salaries, reckless in Palmer River, salaries are up about $100,000, but at DMS they're up about $550,000.
Yeah.
Sorry, they're up about $550,000. Do we know what portion of those increases that have been shifted, have been shifted over to DR, shifted to DMS?
Yeah, so the increase at DMS is predominantly due to the increase, the partial program, which are, it's a one professional FTE and one para. So that will be rough, I'm going off the top of my head, but it's roughly in the neighborhood of well over $150,000. And then the special ed coordinator is, again, roughly in the neighborhood of $100,000. So about 250 of that roughly $500,000 increase is due to the, those two factors. And I think maybe one position from the district-wide got pushed, I wouldn't say pushed, but got allocated there because that's where they're going to focus their, their effort, and so that's the appropriate and proper thing to do. So, and then the rest is roughly, roughly, we've budgeted about 2% salary increases, and so the balance has to do with, I wouldn't say the balance, but has mainly to do with that and step increases and what.
Nurses, also, the support for the nurses.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, thank you very much. There's also, yes, a medical paraprofessional to support the nurses.
That's roaming.
Yeah, I think you heard, because of the pandemic, our nurses were just, and your local body health were just very, so what we decided to do was to give some relief to our nurses. So there will be a designated nurse practitioner for the Dain campus that will serve as both the middle school and the elementary school. Both schools will continue to have a full-time nurse, and then we've mirrored that on the Rehoboth side, and we've mirrored it at the high school as well.
More of an educational question for me, for you guys to educate me. What, why, why is DES a Title I school, but DMS is not?
So the bottom line is, so the federal government tracks the relative incomes, wealth of the population, and they measure what fraction or the percentage rates, and.
They break it down that to grade level as well?
Yeah, and so, and so, the, yeah, and so, so it's by, almost by student, it's almost by student. And so the Palmer River, when we look at it, is right, is right on that cusp of the threshold, and in the past, we've been getting waivers to say, you know, let us, because the federal government wants to avoid this on-off, on-off, because, you know, there's always variation, volatility, but for the last few years, we've been getting waivers, and now that you've had enough, you know, we've done enough waivers and that they're at the point where they're going to say, no, no, it's not going to qualify.
So silly question to that, then, if Beckwith, then, if the majority of kids are going to a private school, then a private school student wouldn't count, or they would count still?
I believe it's the students in the school. I'm not sure, no, that is, no, I'm sorry, I misspoke, I'm positive it's the other way around, because title, the, I'm not sure of our, of this, you know, that, that specific community, but I'm positive, what will happen, the private schools have access to those title funds through the district. We don't actually pass them through, but in some places they do. So it's, the federal government looks at, does look at that.
Okay.
Programs like the title, and also Title I is predominantly elementary, not middle, but they, so federal programs like IDEA and Title I, whatever, they, all students, regardless of public versus private, they'll, they have access to the services or the benefits.
So if we have a private school within Beckwith and the Dain community, our Title I director has to meet with those individual schools and share a portion of our Title I funds with them.
Even if you don't want to?
Especially don't want to. No offense to our.
The last question I have is staffing at the high school, looking at just numbers-wise, we've seen from when my kids were there to today, to the last couple of years, the numbers going down. So, I mean, I can't imagine, I would imagine that class sizes are pretty small at the high school right now.
But we've done, over the years, over the past, I would say, four or five years, we've tried to do those corrections, where we have, you know, reduced sections, and we have laid off staff, but what we're seeing right now is that we have larger classes in the, like the ninth and the 10th grade, then when you get into the advanced placement classes, obviously you don't have the larger amounts there, but you make a really good point, but we also, by the same token, I would say roughly 70, more than 70% of our staff members are on the top step. So that, you know, we have very little turnover of teachers who actually leave the district. We have plays that when we do replace a teacher, we usually look at step five, right in that area, but when we try to get someone right out of college, so it's a step one. So there should be some kind of correlation between those two things, but you're right, the conventional wisdom is that if enrollment is going down, shouldn't the FTEs go down as well, and sometimes that's not always the case. We've tried, we tried to do that a few years back where we did reduce, but what we're saying is that to maintain the advanced placement classes, because as you know, we're a comprehensive school, so we not only have those academic, high-level academic classes, we also have our CTE program contained within the comprehensive school, and then we also, as you no doubt know, we provide a great deal of athletics and activities for the kids at the high school as well. So sometimes that correlation is a little different, but what we have seen is that the increase in salary, and as you no doubt know, as the August group that you folks are as a committee, the predominant amount of money that we're looking at is non-discretionary, you know, through contract, you know, contractual obligations. It's roughly about 85% of our budget, and the only thing that we really can control to a certain extent is that 10% to 15% of what the budget looks like. I think a cost analysis in the future is not too far off to look at that, to give you more specifics of the breakout of that. Why, you know, the conventional wisdom is enrollment's going down, FTE should, there should be that correlation of the two going down as well, but as you know, prices continue to rise, salaries continue to rise as well, so that it is problematic, there's no question about that.
Lied to, I do have one more question.
That's good.
Over the last few years, the school's done a lot of things with, between the pellet stove and new, the efficient, have you guys, have you seen the benefit with rising prices? Have you seen the benefit?
So we have, so I've been, I've been looking at that, the, at the high school, we rely predominant, we've, the boilers are more efficient, the oil boilers are more efficient, we rely on that. We've had, to be honest, we've had issues with the biomass, the wood burning boiler, and, and these days, just with, you know, trying to get technicians, and we need a specialized technician, it's been tough to get that, it's been tough to get it up and running and keep it running, so, but we are, work, it's one of those things on the, you know, behind the scenes, it's on the top of my list, and we're trying to, trying to get it addressed for next season.
To the point, the solar arrays of electricity.
Oh, yeah.
That's been a big cost difference there.
I would, I would definitely say a big win has been electricity, so not just the S-Rex and the power, reduced power, but the reduced power cost, but also the power purchase agreement all around. That was, that was, again, people only see like the increases in a budget, but when something is unchanged or low, it gets missed, but that, I think, is one of the shining, kind of shining stars of the, of the budget.
Anybody else? I just want to thank Eliza for coming, one.
I already thanked you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Azar. Thank you, Rob.
We have, we have three open positions on, the board can be a total of up to seven people. Basically, at the annual town meeting, the moderator determines who sits on the board. It can be as few as, few as, I don't think there's any minimum number, is there?
You have to be quorum.
Yeah, quorum, quorum is just the majority that are on the, so if we had three, it would be two.
Yeah. We don't want.
I think it all depends on how the bylaws run, actually.
Yeah.
I think, I think it's, I think you have to have four.
I thought we had to have four.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'd have to look at the bylaw, anyhow.
Anywho, so that's why we have, we have three people who are interested in joining the board, and we'll go through that now, and I'm not going to take them in any, if we're going, it looks like alphabetical order, so the first, first person we'll talk to is David Carpenter.
Yes.
David, how are you? I don't know if you want to even come a little closer, or?
Yeah.
Okay, that would be best.
Yeah.
Give you a chance just to introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to, well, basically volunteer for the finance committee.
Well, I've been doing accounting and bookkeeping now for, in tax prep, for probably 32 years now. I used to be in construction many years ago, and I kept getting injured every single year to the point where I had to have surgery on both my wrists, and they told me I needed to do something else or this was just going to continue. So I went to school, I sent myself to school, got a, got a degree, and just went from there. I've worked for attorneys, I've worked for construction firms, worked for engineering firms, I've amassed quite a bit of experience over the last 30 years. Right now, I'm working as a CP, as a enrolled agent for CPA firm in Norwood. In addition, I have my own small tax practice here as well. Ideally, I've been living here for the last 20-some years. After my father passed, I moved up here to kind of be with my mother, just to make sure she stays out of trouble, and so far, it's been working. But I was from here, I mean, from six years old till probably in my early twenties when I moved to the Cape, and then I moved back. So, I mean, I've seen a lot of changes in Dain, some good, some meh, you know, I mean, it's, it's to be expected, everybody changes, everything grows, you know, everything's changing, it's growing, you know, there's more people moving in. I'd like to be able to help Dain in any way I can, I like this town. I've benefited from growing up here, so it'd be nice if I could give back a little.
Yeah, you're my Dave or David, first off.
Yeah, I have no preference, either one.
Okay. It's good you limited us to those two. So what role do you think the finance committee should play in the town?
I like the fact that they kind of overview the various budgets, I was impressed to see that we're keeping the school, school committee, I won't say to task, because I think they do overall a pretty good job with what they get, it's, it's very difficult, but I think the various things in this town do need a little oversight, and I'm glad that the finance committee can help provide that. So that's what I'd really like to see happen, is a little more oversight.
Okay. And so how do you think you can contribute to that?
Get analysis, maybe just asking some pertinent questions when they need to be asked.
No, I'm good. I know David, David came for the board some years back, I think, right, Dave?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, yeah, I remember talking with him then, too.
Catherine?
I'm good.
Are you familiar with the schedule?
Was that the schedule they sent me for all of April? I saw there's several dates in April and.
Deplimentary.
All of April.
Yeah, because, yeah, one of them, I'm not going to be.
I was just happy that it was after the 15th, to be honest.
Yeah. Yeah, besides, besides the annual, the annual town meeting, we typically have a meeting in July as well to do, go through this, typically year-end transfers, and then for special town meeting, there'll be a couple of meetings leading into that.
Probably what, like September?
Yeah, September.
Okay.
But, yeah, other than that, I mean, we, we are independent, we are our own, we are an advisory board, we aren't beholden to anyone besides, I guess, maybe the moderator, but if the moderator wanted to change us, so be it.
Okay.
There's other, there's other things I could be doing right now.
I understand. Me, too.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stop, Sue.
And I've been in the town since nineteen ninety-five. Loved bringing up our two girls here. They've done great with this town, with the education system. They've both gone on to be successful. In my time here, I've tried to donate a lot of my time to the town. I did the PTO for five years while the kids were in the lower elementary school. I did the Dayton Middle School School Council and I served two terms on the school committee. I think that would help me on this board, as far as being familiar with that budget. I also helped with the sports programs, baseball and softball. I love this town and I think it does a great job. Everybody really comes and puts in their effort when needed and called. So I think I can be an asset to this committee and I'm willing to get involved again. I had taken a few years off, my husband retired, we did some traveling, so, but I need something to do. I find that I do prepare myself well with the packets given, the materials given for the meetings. I do try and read up and be prepared.
Questions?
Yeah, of course.
What's one or two?
I don't have eyes in the back of my head, though. So, so Sue, I guess my question would be similar to what I asked Dave, you know, what do you think you could contribute? And?
I think my strongest point is having the school committee experience. The biggest part of our budget is our school funding. I think that would be a big help.
Okay. And, and I know, and I know I've, I've seen you in various meetings, not just town meeting, but what do you, I'll ask you this, what do you think is the perception of the finance committee to the townspeople?
I haven't had that discussion with anybody, to tell you the truth. As I read, a finance committee member's responsibilities or duties are, the duties of the committee, I think it's great that it's an overview. Again, we are not pushing an agenda, or this committee is not pushing an agenda, but trying to keep our townspeople safe financially. And I think that's a big need, because so many people are so busy. Many houses, both parents are working and you know it's the same people on a lot of the committees in town. So, I think it's a good thing to be watchdog for the citizens.
Thank you.
Yep. Also?
I thought you were just going to lead, lead with, your work is taking baseball and softball and when you're with us, but?
Yeah, that's what we first met.
Thank you, Sue.
You're welcome.
Catherine.
For some, some strange reason, I don't think I've met any of you. Believe it or not, I've been in the undercurrent of the committees and things, as you can tell from my resume. I'm retired, so I don't have the problem with rather be someplace else. If it needed me, clock in the morning, just call me, okay? Why is you not a spam call? Situations that I had no control over, I've got more time than I've ever had before, I lost my wife. And so it's, it's time to get back in it. I have been very active in other committees over time, as you can tell from the resume. My education is a systems engineer. Work experience is a systems engineer. Believe it or not, one of those few people that through sheer chance studied what I ended up being and enjoying doing, which if nothing else, has given me a very broad outlook on things. Because everything, everything is basically a system. Recently, I'll say in the last five years, it's been, become very obvious that Dayton is not going to be a little cowtown anymore. And matter of fact, as it's, you almost might say population-wise, it's exploding. I was very surprised that we went to a third district for voting so quickly. That is a kind of a picture of what's coming down and I think really the town should have someone really looking at what's coming down on the financial side of it, because we have the, one of the highest tax rates in Bristol County now, right? I have the big fancy schools like Somerset and all this stuff, but as a guy who's paid taxes here for forty years, well, this was nine hundred dollars a year when I came here. Oh, that sounds like an old person talking, forget that. And you can see we're accelerating into a stone wall unless we're prepared for it. I don't get the feeling from what I see or what I have been experiencing in some of these other committees, that we're really not structurally set up to have that. I love the fact that we had a capital improvement committee finally come out of the woodwork. It's just, I think I have, over my experiences, come up with the ability to see things from the outside in, much more so than, I'm not a South Titan, I'm not a North Titan, I live in the, on the other side of the swamps where, when I came here, they said half the people in Dayton didn't know that there was a West Titan. And that's where I live, right in what used to be the village of West Dayton. So I just thought it would be very interesting to try to provide some of the things that I'm worried about, or to help provide some of those things that I'm worried about. I know some of the, well, Nancy Goulart has kind of been my mentor on a lot of these things with other committees he's been on and I've been on. But I know she's putting in a lot of time and work in this and I was kind of disappointed that she has gone on to other things, because there's a lot of work to be done, in my, in my opinion. We're not ready for BP, XYZ, I mean, I love these school teachers, I'm sorry if there are some. Everybody talks in initials. Oh, that's chapter two, the MSPS means absolutely nothing to me, because I'm not familiar with that terminology at all. But as a person in these committees, and you can go to ask any of the, the ones I've worked with, I was on the cable committee, I ended up head, headmanning, if you will, can't use that word, sorry, where is that? Headpersoning the capabilities of this, we used to videotape with a camera and go over to Berkeley and at five o'clock on Thursdays, they allowed us to use their transmitter. And Jim and Ed, who I worked with, that, that was ridiculous. So, we ended up becoming an independent station by putting in the transmitter and upgrading our equipment to handle that. I was also the Electric Light District Chairman. What's the Electric Light District? Anybody know?
Another line on my tax rate.
It's one of the things that I really have a hard time with, only because I worked in private business. And the measures of success are a little differently on that. We've got way too many taxable authorities in this town. Once someone who moved into town asked me, well, who, where's the water department? Well, which one? Where's the Electric Light District? Well, which one? Now, that's when we had four thousand people in town. So there's a lot of duplication or, that just bothers me from my training. I have to brag on this one, when I first took over as Chairman of Electric Light, I wanted to put Dayton on the green trail, if you will, at least in Electric Light. And I was able to just bring it to fruition before I resigned from it, going LED. We were probably one of the only towns in Bristol County, some streetlights, south side, wrong district, north side, I'm not so sure. But we were one of the first ones to get all LED lighting, which is a dramatic drop, again, as we've all learned over time. And so I actually saved money for, for that particular district, which is kind of hard to believe, especially when you listen to the, all the zeros coming out, which are sitting in the back here. By the way, they're one of the, the, when you were talking about the school and stuff, and I'm sitting here and we've got projects, capital projects, which Dayton never really had until the police department. I was the cameraman at these special town meetings and the voting for, and that was a hot potato. It was really very interesting to sit there and, or stand there as a, because I was running the camera. And it's probably the thing that kind of tipped me over, because we went to a special town meeting about borrowing two million, five hundred thousand dollars and not a dime more to build a new police station, which I was in favor of. I'm embarrassed, what we have for a police station, by the tennis courts there. And, you know, I was going, oh, I'm from the other side of town, so I don't get into the hall of the baloney. And I said, oh, great. Well, unfortunately, my education experiences said, I'm going to watch this one. Somebody in the back of the hall, I'm not sure who it was, said, yeah, it's two and a half million now, but what's it really going to cost? And I promise you, two and a half million, that's it. So boom, went right through. Do any of you know how much the police station cost?
Six point two.
How much?
Six point two.
Yes. And that was the free land on top of that. So we lost at least five years of tax on that land while they went through the motion, whatever. But anyway, and as it turned out, the state average for a police station for a town this size in Massachusetts, seven million dollars. And I said, believe it or not, we did a pretty good job, except I don't like to be lied to, right? So, that kind of got me very much on, more on the financial side of it, because that's the big impact thing for a retired guy like me, fixed income, all that stuff, is between the water department, electric, blah, 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 you see it. You know, every three months, you see it. So.
I do have one question for you.
Oh, okay, I know, I like to rattle, that's one of my bad points, is I like to talk too much.
I had heard that Mallory had a title for you.
Valerie.
Mallory, the prior town administrator.
I never met her.
No?
No.
I was told, Nancy told me that she called, she, you were the super sub, or super volunteer.
That might be true, but if you based on my resume, because I never took a dime off the town. I did for free, including the cable. I worked on that for almost twelve years with Jim and Ed, for free, for free, the three of us, but, oh, I know, I know what you're talking about.
That was your question?
I know what you're talking about, because not through anything I did, they created a position on the volunteer list and I was the town, or him, the town volunteer.
Yeah.
So I had.
Does he have to resign from that?
No. So if you don't think of him, yes. If you want anything else. If you want, you want to come up. Do you want to know how I got that position? I do now.
No, you don't.
No.
I was on cable and one of the selectmen and I had a little discussion, yeah, put it in quotes, down in the cable office where the transmitter is. And he said, well, you need a resignation letter. There it is. Boom. So that put me on the wrong track with being one of the cooperative silent ones. Well, guess what? The cable transmitter cracked out and nobody knew how to fix it. I could come up with a plan B, that's one of the things I'm very good at, is coming up with plan Bs. And Dave, who's still, still the chairman there, asked me to help. And that particular selectman was still the selectman. So I, here I am on my own time, downstairs, working with Dave to try to get the transmitter back up, because it was dead, there was no, no DTV at all. And who comes around the corner but that particular selectman? He said, oh, what are you doing here? And I explained that I've been asked to voluntarily try to help get the transmitter back up. Oh, you can't be in here, because you're not an approved volunteer. So I got up out of my chair and I said, Dave, see you later. I walked out. And he, wait, 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 wait. Because I had developed plan, I was just implementing plan B. I said, I'm, I went through this once before, I'm not going to go through it again. Says, we got to compromise. I said, the only compromise I can think of is if I volunteer to be back on cable, but I don't want to be on the committee. Selectman, oh, no, volunteer, you get a volunteer for the, no, I'm not going to do it. So, finally, Dave convinced them, well, maybe if we make a general volunteer, would you be willing to come back and help get, get me out of the hole, right? I said, sure, fine, as a matter of fact, this might be a good idea, because I was in that situation where anybody needing any help in town that I could help with, I would do it. I had to do it asp, okay? So they created a position just for me, just for me. And every year it comes up on the approval of the town volunteers, it's usually in June, and you got to go over and swip. So I'm thinking, boy, I'm going to be busy. Now that you've got this finance committee, they need help. Hey, we got a guy that says, he'll help you, just give him a call. Nothing, trip, trip. And you know the shape of the committees in general, there's usually a spot. CPC is another one I was looking at, I was in on the, on that one, it, I wrote all of the, their procedures and things and really got involved in that. Matter of fact, the heat in this building was provided by CPC, okay? So, see, I'm rambling again. Anyway, that's why that's on there. And I was never called in the last, this was maybe five years ago, that they created that position and put that as a wall between me and this particular selectman. And that worked fine, we got up and we got running again. And once it was up, you know, I'm done, you know, I'm not going to be running the cameras and doing all this other stuff. And Dave would ask me for help on things, no problem, no problem. But it really disappointed me, but nobody else ever asked me. So I said, I got to be a real bastard, I really have to be. And I said, well, you know, what do they call that now, you get, not cold-shouldered, you get?
Ghosted?
What's the word you use?
Ghosted.
No, no. Everybody gets it now, if they say the wrong word or something, they get shut down socially, I guess you would, positions. So I said, no, that's all right, no, I've got other things I can do, but.
You guys have any questions?
We're all set.
Catherine?
Good.
You can talk to Nancy, I don't, I still think I'm the one that convinced her to do this building, because I had gotten involved with the heating system for the tribe there when they, we had three, well, it was three, these pronoun things, they kill me, Aborigines, what do you call them? You know, Indians, sorry, that really had this whole building for years. I'd never been, didn't know anything about it until the heating thing came up. So I got a little bit of expertise. Waste, what a waste, right? And lo and behold, not, maybe five years after that, there were the rumors going around that the, the town hall about adding on to the town hall. You know, we need a, I don't know what you call it, now the executive secretary was fighting with, whatever. But anyway, they were, they were, you could see it building up, they wanted to add on to the town hall. Well, we could put it on that end down there and, and I said, you got a perfectly good building right down there. And I said, you got a perfectly good building right down there. Fortunately, I think Nancy heard me because she was a selectman at the time. I was very pleased to find out that they decided to go that way as compared to a two and a half million dollar guarantee extension to that building when we had nothing over here. This is, turned out beautiful. My compliments to the highway department. I knew they did a lot of the work internally and stuff. Did a super job for the way it came out. Okay, I'll show you.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
I tend to ask questions. I tend to be a pain in the butt. But it's only because I wanna help, especially now because I'm listening to you guys talking about 2% and all this. And I'm saying to myself, I wonder what the, what they're gonna do for the cost of living for next year for the big, the big elephant in the room, which is the, the school budget. You're talking probably a 10%, 10% increase in salary, stay even. Yeah, yeah.
We'll have to wait and see.
No, you know, see, that's where I disagree. Is, I don't, I don't like to do that. If I see a problem, I would, I would like to find out, well, what is going on? Just obviously, if you want everything to stay the way it is this year and it costs 8%, 10% more. Been through that once in the eighties. I know how that works. You end up paying. Well, that's okay. Then, I didn't know anything about BP. BP, yeah. That was the thing that kind of tipped me off. Any vocational schools are there in Dayton? If I count BP, that's just down the road.
That students go to?
Vocational schools.
That Dayton students go to?
Yeah, I guess you could say that because I think it's true.
Yeah, you got DR, BP. Do you call it Yaggy? Do we have?
You got three.
Does anybody go to Diamond or?
I don't.
Really those three are the key.
Yeah. What I said to myself, we got, we're supporting three vocational schools.
But they all run different programs and that's.
So does the high school.
No, the high school cannot duplicate the programs.
Thank God.
That are at BP.
Thank God.
Or at the Aggie.
Why can't we have them all in one place?
Because we don't have the population to support those programs times four at every single grade level. That's why.
But we have one at DR.
We have a CTE program. Yeah, they're adding programs to the curriculum.
All I'm saying, just bringing it up, I'm not.
Yeah, but these are the things, these are the things that, I mean, we're well aware of those, those items. And the questions behind, why do we have three schools?
Okay.
Okay. First off, and it's primarily that. We, because we have, we are part of those agreements, we, we cannot at the CTE program at DR duplicate, compete.
Doing it to me, CTE.
I don't even. What is it?
Occasional classes.
Okay, yeah, okay. That's what they call the program at DR.
Congratulations.
There you go, thank you. So we can't, we can't duplicate any program. So if you are a student who wants to, what's the new program they're introducing? Metalwork, yeah, the advanced manufacturing, I think is what they called it in there. There, BP doesn't offer that.
Okay.
Whereas the Aggie doesn't offer that. Therefore, we can.
Can.
Plumbing?
Plumbing BP offers, so DR cannot.
Right.
Yeah. Well, we're not in, don't forget, BP, we've only been in it for eight years.
The second time, the second time.
Yes, I know. But, you know what I'm saying? I'm just, I'm the guy on the outside looking in. We have.
But we need to. Here's, here's, here's how I'm gonna wrap that up here.
Yeah.
We don't worry about the political side and people's opinions about what should and should not be incorporated. We get the numbers from the department heads and we look at them and we say, how do we justify increase or decrease? You know, why, we look at that. Why has this decreased? Oh, we moved it from this account over to this. So it's really a net nothing, right? So we look at that. We also look at, why is the school budget increasing 3%? We got that explanation tonight. We look at, we have the budget meetings that are gonna be coming up. But let's say, for example, Chief McDonald wants to add two more full-time officers. We would look at that. Can we support that? And we might tell the chief, we can support, we think we can support one FTE for the full year and one FTE six months later.
Again, FTE, what's it?
Full-time employee. One additional officer. So it all depends on the situation and the fight. And so what, we are fiscally responsible to the town regardless of what our opinions are about what is being brought to the table. And that's, that's our role.
Fiscal responsibility is driven by two and a half? Please go that far? I mean, are you just a rubber stamp committee for?
Not at all.
What the politics of the town is? Or do you actually have an influence in these budgets?
We provide, we provide our recommendation. And it's a matter.
Or no recommendation?
Well, I mean, our recommendation in that case would be zero then, which we've done. We've had a thorough recommendation.
In all due respect, I don't know that this is the format that we were following tonight. And I, I think we've given each candidate.
Equal time.
Equal time.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I like.
And no disrespect. I think we should, you know, everybody's had an opportunity to present themselves. I think we should.
Okay, we'll move on to.
With the meeting.
Okay, no, that's.
Very nice of you. I like to be here and I appreciate that. And I'm sure the whole board does.
Don't look like I'm gonna be a good fit so you can. Yeah?
Thank you, chef.
Mike, we'll move on to the overview?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Kim. So I'll make this really quick. Obviously, we still were about midway through our budget process at this point, we started. So our process really looking and analyzing FY22 revenues at the end of the calendar year. We went to the department budgetary request process. And now we're in the middle of the selectmen's recommendation process. But at the outset of the process, I just wanted to share with the FinCom actually a few of the drivers that are actually driving everything this year in terms of what. So there are a few challenges we're dealing with right off the bat. Like in number one, if you look at the new growth, I'll zoom in a little bit. If you look at the new growth in where we're projecting our new growth to be, at this point, going into FY23, it's about a hundred and, roughly $170,000 decrease from FY22, from the current fiscal year. And that, and that, and that new growth projection actually also mirrors, because they're completely interconnected, it completely mirrors the building licensing, the building licensing, the permit revenues that we're also projecting based on trends from the end of '21 and also eight months into '22. And you remember in FY21, we had a very high year in building licenses and permits, which, which we raised to that actual revenue realization. And FY22, I'm sorry, FY21, which we have since, came back and downgraded. But overall, we don't have the, have the local receipts and we've actually had to downgrade significantly our local receipts that, you know, like as compared to what we've been used to the last few years. So those are, so that is affecting our revenues and build, and new growth, licenses and permits. We do have a little bit of new revenues from the, from the increase in cash banks that we built into FY21 projections. But then the other issue that's driving the decreased revenues going into FY23 is the fact that we, we had to significantly downgrade our ambulance receipts based on what the actuals are coming in at in FY22, but also based on the fact that where we have been in that revenue and what we have appropriated out of that, what we have been appropriating out of that revenue line is no, is no longer sustainable. So the $380,000 that we are projecting on utilizing FY23 is, so, so obviously would come out of the ambulance revenue. But in addition to that, we also anticipate a warrant article to fund the first year. So the, so the ambulance up at Station Two, is that the end of its, is that the end of its life schedule? So, so like we are proposing the first of a three-year lease at about $120,000 per year to come, to come out of the ambulance fund as well. And so that brings a total draw in FY23 from the ambulance fund around $500,000. That, that is definitely doable. It does, it does also, it does also leave a pretty healthy retained revenue as well, but just from an operational point of view, we're going from $670,000 from that being applied to the budget to $380,000. So one of the things that I mentioned in my prior emails to the committee, the, the, so the initial, the initial DR proposal budget was, was submitted with a $620,000 increase. Like in, and back when DR proposed that, you know, based, you know, based on these revenues, that, so that $620,000 increase far up pace what our revenues to actually fund, so what our new revenues to fund the budget would be. So like I had, so I had a lot of worries about that. In that, we're already having to downgrade our, we're already having to downgrade our access level capacity back down to FY, FY19 levels based on, based on the drawback in local receipts. So that, so my, so our recommendations at this point, the, the, so roughly $300,000 that is left in the, that is left in the access, that is left in the access capacity at this point, this does include the, the updated, the updated DR budget with a $338,000 increase. And if you, and if you back out the 14, the $414,000 that was applied, so that was applied to the free cash in the bond for the police debt service. So like you'll actually see that our fiscal position going in to FY23 is very, very similar to where we were in FY19. So like I just wanted to set the stage generally for where, based on our trends, we expect to be. Like Janelle and I who just had to leave, you know, like we're really facing a real, a real top priority on revenue and expense, on revenue and expense forecasting. And in the conversations we have also had with DR, we, so we have conveyed to them that we need them to forecast with us as well. Oh, you know, they represent a huge chunk of our budget. Oh, you know, and to only, I mean, to only forecast the town, you know, like 40, so 47% of that, like without everything else, oh, you know, like, I mean, we're only really trying, trying to project not even half of the budget. So we've been really working hard. Janelle has been, oh, yeah, like Janelle has been, and Janelle's been absolutely phenomenal as well. But yeah, I just wanted to give you a sense of where we were. So the FinCom and new RAS approaches, you know, like your own budget process and schedule, generally where we were. I mean, obviously, oh, you know, I mean, oh, you know, we want and we welcome sort of like your feedback in this as well. But I just wanted to give an update where we were at this point.
Just the ambulance fund off as much as it is.
So, so, so.
Bottom line, fewer calls.
Yeah, but.
Fewer calls and, and also the Medicaid contract.
Yeah.
Contractually, all those rates went down.
Okay, so if we have fewer calls, I would assume we haven't used a lot of outside services, ambulance.
Outside services, what do you?
In other words, if our ambulances get tied up and somebody needs a rescue, it gets called from another town, correct?
Mutual aid, yes.
Right, mutual aid.
Yes.
So is our mutual aid number down?
To be honest with you, so to be honest with you, I'm not sure, but that wouldn't really necessarily affect our revenue here as well.
No, no, but he's saying a lot less calls.
Yep.
So if that's a lot less calls, we should have less mutual aid because we wouldn't have been as dependent on other.
So.
Communities.
So we had a high year.
That would make sense, but I, the chief didn't report. I'm talking from our capital outlay meeting where they presented us in some, and we talked a little bit about the spending of the ambulance funds themselves and how we need to rein it in because of the fact that revenues were gonna be less.
Right.
We did not talk about if there was a decrease in mutual aid.
I'm just kidding.
Regardless of that, though.
Yeah.
My position is, is this, is that mutual aid is an expense that we need to budget for.
Yeah.
And I'd rather be overstating an expense and understating revenues to be, and try, and try to bounce the budget with that philosophy.
Oh, I understand.
Than for us to, I mean, we can't, certainly, I think when the chief comes in for his meeting, we can ask him how mutual aid looks and if he's gonna decrease that, that expense line item. But we shouldn't be decreasing it in the same fashion that our, our revenues, we're decreasing our revenue.
I'm not advocating that.
Yeah, okay.
That's not the question at all. It's not even where I'm going with it. I'm just wondering if we're that far down, my first thing would be, are we collecting what we should? Number one, do we have, are we behind on receivables?
No, no, we're up to date. So we're up to date, like, I would also say the past two years, we have actually overextended. We've overextended the revenue projection as well.
We might have spent more than we took in only because it was there.
Yeah, yeah, but we projected to do that at the outset, even though it might have been, so we might have been like going and planning to go.
Based on what we thought.
Yeah, yeah, rather than we.
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand. It was just a question because it's a substantial difference. Even all the way back to '19, it's, you know, it's the lowest that it's been since '19.
Yeah.
And, and I was encouraged to see like '21 and all. And '20, it seemed like our receipts were going up and we were doing better because of the way we were billing and getting paid and stuff. And it's just a little setback.
Yeah.
So next question to we are taking, I mean, so the, so the '23 number does look low. So that also includes the first year of lease. So that, so the total number we're drawing, the total draw.
Yeah.
Is $500,000.
Right, so you're pulling already a number out of there.
Yeah, yeah. So that total draw is $500,000.
I got you. Yeah.
Exactly, does that make sense?
Yeah, it does now.
And I believe the chief said that, that we have not written off any, anything.
That's awesome.
We do, so, so, so I need to do abatements because of the challenges with Mass Health and Medicare and the reimbursements. So they have built up. We do over the next few months and that's why we, as, as I mentioned previously, we're going through a financial management review with DOR right now too. And so one of the things is we don't actually And so, uh, one of the things is we don't actually, um, have a process for abatement write-offs. Uh, like, and we're talking with DOR, oh, you know, like about a policy, uh, that we can use really to manage that process. So like it's not, again, there's a lot of confidentiality involved in that process as well, so we wanna make sure we get it right. So like I just wanna be clear, there is, so there is an amount that we do, uh, that is there to abate, but it's also not affecting our bottom line either.
Okay.
That's more of a filling adjustment.
Yeah, it's, yes, yeah.
And when, when did we buy the last ambulance?
Oh, it was what, a few years ago?
Five, so maybe five years ago.
Oh, wow, wow, okay.
Yeah, and, and that is gonna be announced.
Yep.
Um, for this, for FY twenty-three?
That's what I, I think.
I believe so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, FY twenty-three.
So, so similar to, you know, what we were doing with, with the, um, fleet for, uh, uh, trying to replace a patrol car every year.
Right, right.
They, we have two ambulances, like expected life, ten years, they're looking at every five years. And I think by the time we get this one in, actually, it would, we'd be in the sixth year of the, the last, of the last one.
Yeah, the way things are going.
But, you know. I, I, I know that this committee typically puts public safety as one of their top priorities.
Yeah, I had to use them back in December, so yeah. I, I have one more question, I, I assume the growth number, is that somewhat conservative?
Yes, exactly. So, I mean, I, so, so, yeah, the growth number is conservative. So, but the, um, the, it's like at this point, I'm still not sure how conservative it is because our building, so because our building revenues have also been off so much as well.
Okay.
So.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to, it's hard to say how conservative.
No, I understand.
At this point.
Yeah, I've just seen.
Hopefully we do have a little bit of them there.
Yeah, okay. Hopefully it'll be, pick up somewhere. I'm all set, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Uh, regarding the schedule, uh, April twenty-first, I am not here.
Uh, any Thursday is gonna be bad for me right now. Just not tonight for some reason.
We were to move off of Thursdays.
I, well, I could be here Thursdays at like six forty-five-ish, have a meeting that runs till six thirty.
I could be here for six.
Yeah, I can be here whenever.
I mean, I have no problem with the committee moving on without me.
I'm sure.
Probably easier to take on a Thursday.
Yeah, and, and I'm gonna venture to say that based on the schedule, a lot of those, um, a lot of the budgets that are being presented won't have significant changes, um, and if they are, I can, I'll get ahead of it. Ask you to ask those questions.
Like, when do we have to be, when do we have to be done by?
When the water goes, geez, I should have, goes to print in around the twelfthish, um, twelfthish or May.
Well.
So, yeah, this schedule does need a little flexibility.
We could do May fifth, no?
Yeah.
What's that?
Yeah, cause then, so that would be the third to fifth.
Usually, yes.
The tenth.
Tenth, yeah.
So the other option is, so if the committee wanted to move up a week as well and spread it out, spread it out towards the front as well.
Do the week before and then skip the twenty-first, you mean?
As well, it doesn't matter to me, but, um, so start on the day before, which would be.
We could move the twenty-first to the fourteenth.
How about?
Or?
Or the nineteenth, the Tuesday?
Yeah, we could do that.
Oh, you're going on a week, then let's move it to the week before. If everybody can, but, no, that's before I talk.
Uh, would that fit with your tax date?
Oh, it is, yeah.
Is what it is.
So that would bring it to the fourteenth, you said, April fourteenth?
Yeah, about that. That's fine.
Yeah, and then.
Gives us two, you can remember, except the, I'd rather have two weeks at the end.
Big stop.
Just in case then.
CPA?
Yeah.
Yeah. April fifteenth.
That I'm just.
I know.
Oh, it's, it's later?
But I'm leaving on the fifteenth.
Well, it's up to you, Pete, we either push it or pull it.
Said I'm, I'm out of here on the fifteenth.
So you don't wanna do the fourteenth?
Fourteenth is fine.
You don't have a case?
Yeah, fifteenth of August.
Are you okay with that? So can we change this to the fourteenth then, uh?
Does that work, Mike?
That works for me.
All right, so let's just change that and leave everything else the same.
Fifth and the tenth if we need it to.
Yep.
Fourteen.
Right, okay, yeah, that work?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so I'll move this to April fourteenth and then everything else will stay the same.
Like you, you guys will notify the?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
And do we want a capital outlay update?
We probably want to give it, I don't know, they already gave us the one on the ambulance.
Did I have it, I think, was that, I didn't even know that I was on the agenda.
Uh, sure, right.
We had a swashbuckling decision, it was one.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, I mean, what I'll say is that we've, we've heard from all the department heads in terms of what they expect for FY twenty-three, um, and we are in the process of trying to prioritize those requests to make a recommendation to this committee, um, and, uh, we have a meeting this coming Tuesday to kind of finalize what that, that's gonna look like. I forgot what I, did I write down a total number? Can't write down a total number, um.
I think I know it's, but I wanna say fifty-four, five million, but that's, so there were a number of things, there are the feasibility studies included in that, so that didn't really show the whole true, uh, the whole true need.
Yeah.
The other thing, we're finishing up a pavement management plan also for our roads, which is just wrapping up now. Um, and that is also adding, that's also gonna be a big nugget as well, so.
Yeah.
So.
So far, people submitting articles without going through you, or are they pretty much?
I haven't, well, I, I, I haven't seen any articles that have been submitted, I'm, Mike might know better than me.
So like a lot of our departments too, like I think your point, Mr. Chair, they're waiting to see, um, so what, uh, what type of feedback comes from the capital outlay on Tuesday night?
Okay.
Um, so which is, I think, is a refreshing step.
Yeah, yeah, that's good, that's, all right, okay.
Yeah, but there's, I mean, there's, uh, there's, there's a lot of asks for feasibility studies because of the need. So the, the school district is asking for one, for our Dyton campus, um, which we know, you know, we have modulators in there right now that were supposed to be, what, a couple of years only, and we're, you're.
Five. Yeah, the end of five, right?
Um, but then also, we know we have the library, we have the fire station. So again, we're looking at economies of scale too. If we can get these feasibility studies all into one, I'll call it contract with a particular firm, we would probably save ourselves a few thousand dollars, uh, it could be twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars if we gave, you know, put it, everything out to bid collectively.
Yeah, that's one.
Yeah, that's one, so, that's, uh, so we're looking at that, um, and how we wanna go about that. Is that it, was it just the library and the fire station, I thought there was one.
There's highway, it's the highway.
Oh, yeah, 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 that, yeah, the highway garage, yeah. Yeah, just a few things, just a few things. So, and then, I mean, we, we, we did, as a capital outlay, we didn't really, again, talk about BP um, and everything there because that's out of our hands, right? It, it came to, it, it came down to the voters, right? Um, not just in our community, but all the communities, and now we have the result. Um, and now we gotta figure out how we crack that nut. Um, and on top of that, we, we're, we're very good at trying to figure out how we're gonna spend the money get that, that the town receives. What we're not very good at is setting aside money for capital outlay. So we've been kind of bringing down our capital state, capital stabilization fund a little bit at a time. We need to start looking at, how do we fund these capital outlay projects? Plus, get some more money back into that fund so that we can sustain all the future projects. And that's really kind of been the goal of the capital outlay committee is, it's great that you tell us what you're gonna need this next fiscal year. What are we gonna need the year after, and the year after that, and the year after, we need to start planning for that.
Yeah.
So that when we do our transfers to capital stabilization, we, we're starting to account for the future, future.
We know we have to spend three million in five years, we have to break that up over five years at twenty percent a year.
Right.
And try to find a way to get that in there, so that has to become focused as part of our budget, just as much as an expense.
Right.
I think that's what you're alluding to.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Absolutely.
Mike, do we know if, if, we've had talk of the pilot programs going into, has there been any further?
Yes, that's one of the things, it's part of our work with DOR, I've been looking, um, and, um, in the next few weeks, um, so, uh, I'd say following ways, uh, they've been dealing with pilots, paying a little taxes for solo projects over the last few years. Uh, so pilots that, um, are in the queue in projects that were permitted a few years ago, um, are accounted for in revenue different than they are today. Um, so we're looking at that, what can we do, or how to do that? And see if we can get, um, and propose a special time anymore article, uh, you know, um, to dedicate those revenues, um, or, you know, to a dedicated to us rather than just hitting the general fund. Um, and then we're looking at the same thing, uh, with the anticipated marijuana revenues as well. Especially with, uh, one connection, hopefully in the next, I'd say month, like give or take, um, it's still ready to start.
Coming online.
Yeah, and we already have the excise.
Yeah.
Uh, we have the excise, the tax all approved, ready to go from, uh, twenty nineteen, I believe. Then we have the wholesale community agreement fees, um, uh, you know, that is gonna be revenue, good revenue as well, so. So yes, we are working on it.
Okay.
Those dedicated funding sources, such as the point that Kevin said.
Yeah. Any minutes?
Yeah, I have a couple, I have two laptops, and apparently the others are on the other laptop, I apologize. Um, I have minutes from April twentieth of twenty twenty-one and minutes from, are you, right there, um, eleven-one of twenty twenty-one.
The computer'd have the rest?
Yes, I can send those.
Why don't we?
Yeah, let's send them and.
Send them all, and then do them on the fourteenth, okay?
Yeah, we'll just prove them then.
Who should, Mike, should I send those to you, or who do I send those to?
Just us.
Oh, just you guys?
Just us, yep.
I will send those, yep.
And once, once they're approved, then they go to the town clerk.
Right at the prime.
Okay.
Either way.
Yeah, 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 proved made it, yeah.
So Kevin, the only thing I'd ask in advance, if you could just send me a list of the minutes?
Yep.
So then I can like include a specific listing of the minutes on the agenda?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yep, I will do that, okay.
Right, now the only thing left for us to do is to act on interview of candidates.
Right.
And would that be better to do?
I mean. It's, it's a tough call because, I mean, open meeting, I, I don't know, you know what I mean? If that's executive session.
We don't, we don't, we don't have executive sessions.
Right, exactly, that's what I'm saying, so.
We're on either way.
So.
Yeah. Would we motion?
Or we, well, we would, we would have discussion first.
I understand.
I don't have any discussion items.
The, the only, um, the only thing, uh, I'll say before we take it to the next step is I believe one candidate did remove themselves from consideration, so, uh, we'll accept that removal and.
Okay.
Move on from there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Catherine, any, any foot on how you wanna proceed?
I don't have any questions for anyone.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion then, that, uh, Sue Lorenz and David Carpenter be appointed to the, to two of the, uh, open finance committee, uh, positions.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I, I think we need to go one by one, don't we?
Uh, I don't think, cause, do we need to?
No, no, he's here.
Okay.
Are you here in person, so?
Yep, great, yep.
I said.
So what is the next thing for them, Willie?
To the committee.
Will they have to go to the town and see somebody gets sworn in?
One question, I need to back to sending my resignation letter to the board of my cards, but I'm on right now.
Okay.
Do that tomorrow?
The town hall's open on Fridays.
Oh, that's right.
So, Thursday Monday, um.
I, I think you just have to do it before you can be sworn in, right?
Okay.
Okay, so you'll, you'll have to just go to town hall and go see the clerk, right?
Yep.
The clerk and be sworn in, and, and, Mike, will you notify the?
Our next meeting is April fourteenth, should be here, yes. Otherwise Catherine will put you down as absent.
As long as they're sworn in before the next meeting, then they can.
Right, right, yeah, you have.
On the board, yeah.
Go for the next meeting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Any, basically any point between now and April fourteenth.
Who does that now, the clerk still?
The town clerk.
Yeah, just get ahold of the town clerk and just let them know that we voted to have you on.
Mike, Mike's gonna fill in.
Huh?
Mike, Mike's gonna take care of notifying clerk.
I have one more question.
Oh, yeah.
I did the conflict of interest course, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
It was carried over a long time.
Yeah, right. Yeah, so, Dave, you'll be.
And the harassment one, did you do the harassment one?
No, I didn't.
There's a couple of courses.
Online, right?
Couple of courses that are, couple of courses that are mandated by the state that, that you'll get an email from probably the clerk, right? Yeah, from the town clerk, that says you have to take these.
You would have done it with this committee.
Conflict of interest, one is, uh, unlawful harassment, I believe. Pretty basic, online.
About, uh, accepting gifts and, okay.
Uh, no. This is, yeah, municipalities. Yeah, yeah, it won't, would be nice, but no.
Right.
Yeah, that's it, I, I mean, April fourteenth.
That'll be the.
And then the next one would be the following Tuesday, April twenty-sixth, a week after that, week, week and a half after that.
So if I can describe your, you know, addresses also, so we can, all the information we can send out.
Are you okay to motion to adjourn?
It was there, okay.
Yeah, so moved, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
I opposed, I stab it.
I was thinking about something too, from when I used to take the notes and stuff.
We just adjourned.
I think there's somebody we have to record them with after we do it with the town, isn't there?
It, uh, the clerk.
Yeah, we should send them in, right?